All right, the recording has started.
All right, so we're back. It is 8:01. Seeing what we have going on here. I had sat down. I just grabbed a quick bite to eat. I had sat down. Hoping to go and check part of my email for something, but. So at this point, I know we want to sort of figure out whether or not we want to move to vote tonight or not. I'm looking for input here. I'm also looking through my computer, so I apologize. I'm looking off to the side. How is everybody feeling after this process? I guess is the best way to start the conversation.
I guess I would like to sleep on it.
I feel comfortable to vote tonight. I have all the information. I was reviewing every, all the information and feel like I have the information to make a decision.
May I insert one little thing?
Yes, please.
I do have some summaries of the reference checks that I made, if you want to hear that at some point, too.
That would that would be great. How about, does anyone have anything else they want to say, or should we just get those summaries from Dorothy at the moment? Trying to talk like that today.
I'd like to hear the summaries, too.
Okay.
Okay, you ready?
Please, please.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go in alphabetical order of the three candidates. So for Mary Beth Banyos, I was able to speak to Dr. or Mr. Sawyer, the superintendent in Shrewsbury. It turned out that he had hired her twice. First as an assistant principal in a school where he was a principal, and then later when he had the opportunity to hire her as an assistant superintendent in Shrewsbury when he became the superintendent there. I talked, I asked about communication skills. He said it's a strength of hers. He said the school committee often expressed appreciation for her ability to explain educational concepts in a way that was understandable to them and to the community. In terms of working with staff, it was her responsibility during the opening day of any year to talk about the professional development that was going to be engaged in that year. She was able to well engage staff, able to make connections to the work of the district that would, that tied to the professional development of the teachers. He talked about the fact that Shrewsbury was one of the first in the state to work on the portrait of a graduate. And Mary Beth was able to bring together different stakeholders, including business and higher education, able to connect people in different groups to come together with a common vision and a common product. She was also able to bring concepts of innovative practice to a workable plan. So taking the concept and getting people to work with it to get it to a plan. And he emphasized that the work that she did in the district has persisted even after she left the district. So it wasn't sort of a she introduced it, and then once she left, the basis was gone and the work went away. He talked about her ability to empower educators and to view professional development as the growth of the educator and not simply training. He talked about the fact that she honors the autonomy of educators, but also is able to keep them directed to the work of the district and connect the PD to the work of the district. So they're able to be self-directed in their work, but also aimed towards the district goals. I asked about if he had seen growth of her as a manager. He said, including Shrewsbury from a smaller district, she had a bigger leadership team to deal with. And she had to connect across more multiple levels of, and connect differently. And her perspective grew as she accommodated to this new, new need. He talked about being faced with a difficult budget where she had to figure out how to advance the work without the resources that she might have wanted. And that was part of how there was a change in professional development in the district to make it more self-directed and self-growth within the district. She also, when the Common Core came into effect, or it came into being, she was confronted with some people in the district who were sort of, if you remember, there was some sort of pushback against the Common Core when it came in. She was able to listen to those people, let them know she respected their viewpoints, it didn't get defensive. But then was able to explain what the district was doing and help get people to understand the direction. She was involved heavily in rolling out a one-to-one initiative across different grades and schools in the district. And she didn't push on people. She was not sort of what he described as, she was not a command and control leader. But when something didn't work, she was willing to go back to the drawing board and figure out what would make it work. And in doing the work she did, she gives trust to people to, to let them grow and do their work and gets trust and respect in return. He said she's delightful to work with, has a good sense of humor, is a positive, is a good collaborator. She's firm when necessary, though, and holds true to the values that she has about education. And he also talked about, I asked about cultural proficiency. He said it really wasn't much of a focus in the work that she did in Shrewsbury. However, she was always open-minded. Focused on was right for kids and families and make sure that the entire range of families in the district were served. So that is what I had for Mary Beth. I understand that you talked, one of her other references was the chair in Killington, which you talked to when you did that visit. And I wasn't able to reach her, her other contact that was on her application. Ready to move on to Phil? Okay, I see most of you are muted, so I'll just move on. So I was able to talk to two people for Phil. One was George Edwards, who he works with as part of the NEAS work that he does. George has known Phil for 11 or 12 years. He is the executive director there. And Phil has volunteered over quite a number of years to chair visiting teams. He sees Phil's communication skills as excellent, no matter what the vehicle is, whether it be email or talking to people or meeting them person to person. He makes good connections with people. He has a good affect in developing those connections. He, in leading the different NEAS visits that he's led, he's been an extremely effective chair. He's good at communicating prior to the visit, during the visit, and follow-up. And developing esprit de corps very quickly with the different teams that are put together for the visits. He communicates well with the office, too. And Mr. Edwards was talking about his strong organizational skills and coordinating every aspect of those NEAS visits, which can be very complex. And also he is well able to evaluate the skills of the team members that he has and is newly acquainted with in order to use their different skills in completing the different aspects of the visit. He talked about this past fall, where there was going to be a new type of visit that was conducted a bit differently, and they were confident enough in Phil's abilities and demeanor to train, to pick him as the one that would be trained to do that new kind of visit. He's seen as collegial and supportive, builds good relationships with the schools, and that was part of the reason he was chosen for that work. In his work in the high school, his work with high schools requires a leader with good collaboration skills, and he believes that that is a skill that Phil has brought to Andover. In a time when there was some, an interim principal there for less than a year, when he entered the district, there was a period of transition and uncertainty. And it was Phil's skill and demeanor and calm work that got the ship moving in the right direction when he got to Andover. He's also seen as someone who's culturally proficient. He's astute and knowledgeable and sensitive to the needs of the people around him. As a person, he's seen as outgoing and personal, personable and well able to interact with staff. I also was able to talk to Marinella Graff, who some of you may be familiar with. She also worked with Phil in a couple of different districts, or she worked with Phil in Hamilton Wenham, where he was the chair of the Fine Arts. Which also, while it was at the high school, had some K-12 work that was involved in it. Also, you know, as you know, assistant principal and assistant associate principal. Marinella hired Phil as the principal of Andover High School as she was retiring. So she did the hire, but she didn't actually work with him there. She also was the supervisor when he was doing his certification for administrative and principal work. So she has a pretty long association with him in a couple of different ways. He, she sees him as a very good communicator who can work across all levels internally. From elementary to middle to high, part of the reason that she picked him in Hamilton Wenham to do, to be in charge of some task forces that involve K-12 was because of his leadership and his, because of his communicating ability. She sees him as good at problem solving. Good at facilitating groups and bringing out people so that everyone can contribute. She talked about when he was assistant principal and had to do some disciplinary work as part of his job. That he was great at being able to talk to kids about what had happened. And she said there was never a complaint from a parent that went up to the superintendent, so feeling like he was able to talk to students and parents about situations and get good resolutions. She said he was big on management by walking around before it was really popular. And was good at having both academic and social interaction, social conversations with kids. And that, you know, that he also was, took kids on ski trips and had conversations, good conversations with them there and led some service trips, it sounded like internationally. In terms of the municipal piece of his work, he did present at school committee and worked at some problematic aspects of things. He is a good spokesman at forums that might have been community forums, spent times with, spent some time with FinCom and Selectman in order to explain some of the initiatives of the work. She's seen him grow as a manager in the time that she's known him and as a leader. He's become more reflective. He's been able to have good conversations, take heart when people talk to him about ways that he needs to grow and learn. And open to constructive criticism to help, help him in his own personal growth. She's has an ability to sit and think and need to, need to take on what he needs to, to be a better leader. She sees him as a good collaborator who seeks out people with different opinions and perspectives. So when he puts together a group, he doesn't put people together that are just like-minded, but he looks for that diversity of opinion. She says he has lots of tenacity. She talked about something that Phil talked about, which is that change in Andover to the new schedule that they had to wait to implement because of some elementary challenges. But that time gave him time to really coalesce the staff around that change. You know, he was coming in needing to implement a change that someone else had decided upon. But he was able to take that time to bring together people and really get people behind the change and supportive of the change in that time. As a person, she sees him as caring, compassionate, reflective, a true professional. And says people aren't invisible to him, that he sees people and he takes relationships to heart. And he's seen as someone who's culturally proficient and has actually worked some in Andover to increase the diversity of the staff in there. That is that's what I have about Phil. And now I can tell you a little bit of what I learned about Dan. I talked with two people about Dan. One was Bill Gaines, who's the executive director of the Massachusetts Association of School, the Massachusetts School Administrators Association. So, excuse me. He's known Dan for about 10 to 12 years. Dan has been on the board of directors of that organization for quite a while. And he's known Dan since he's been a principal in Belmont. Dan has a unique role on that board, not only serving on the board, but is the coordinator of federal relations for that organization at the National Association. And the only Massachusetts person who plays that role. So he cert, he was picked as the Legislative Advocate of the Year by that national organization for the terrific associations that he had built. And the significant contributions that he'd made to the National Association. He's been effective and highly regarded, extremely organized. He, one of his responsibilities is to make presentations at every board meeting. And Bill talked about him having a unique style that doesn't come across as aggressive, but people listen to him when he speaks. He always has his agenda well organized, gives good reports and explanations in a clear, concise, and not overbearing way. He has a nice way of engaging people. And he has the ability to gain and sustain interest when he's communicating with people. Bill's seen him grow as a manager in the positions that he's had. When he has a project, he runs with it. He sticks to it. He's got a sense of tenacity. And he is often running ahead of everyone else to get the work done. He, and also in that organization and nationally, he is very well respected by his peers. He's extremely culturally proficient, definitely reflects on the communities that he's involved with and to make sure that there's equity in that, in the work that's done. He's described as quiet and gentle, but very considerate, gets to know everyone around him, gains the respect of staff. And you can tell that he wants to know more about people and really considers people on an individual basis. He's likable, which is really important. Bill felt in a leadership capacity. And he's able to provide, he's able to gain respect and provide trust and credibility back to himself. I also talked with Kathleen Duff, who knows him in part because she worked with him in puberty. But has kept in association with him also through the Administrators Association. So they've always stayed and caught in touch. She sees him as a clear and direct communicator who is concise and thoughtful. Always well thought out in what he's presenting and to the point, and speaks of value and over need. He, she sees that over time, he's grown in patience as he's worked as a manager. He's always wanted to be collaborative, get the voice of the people around him rather than having his own voice prevail. Big picture person, and that, that ability to see the big picture and vision has grown over time. When he's confronted with a problem, he's willing to seek out help and have honest conversations. And go back to those conversations when he feels it's appropriate and it was, it didn't work out the way it should have. She also seemed him as being culturally proficient and sees that as a strength of his, knows how to read people and connect with them in a very quiet way. That is what I have.
Thank you. That was really helpful. It's good to hear about the references and get a little bit different perspectives other than what we've already heard in interviews.
So at this point, we want to, we need to decide if we want to have the discussion tonight or tomorrow, I think. Again, that, that's sort of on the table, then, you know, if we decide it's tonight, then we'll go through the process that Dorothy laid out the other day, which I've got up on another page. But, you know, moving on from there. You know, I guess I'll start. I could make a decision tonight. But I don't know, I don't know that 24 hours is gonna change my mind. Let's put it that way. Either way. You know, without sort of getting into the discussion point right now, it's whether or not we, you know, do this tonight or we do this tomorrow. So, you know, like I said, I don't think the 24 hours would change my mind, but.
Can I, excuse me, David, can we discuss and then sleep on it, or?
Dorothy, I'm looking to you on that.
Sorry, I have to unmute myself.
No problem.
Okay. I
Dorothy, do you want me to say it?
What, I'm just, I, I might, I hesitate to say that's a good idea, but I'm not really sure I can articulate well why, so.
So we, we can decide tonight from three candidates. Because we have three candidates tonight. Tomorrow night, we could have three candidates, or we could have two candidates, depending upon what another public body decides. Personally, I was prepared to vote tonight. And after reading the comments from the visits. I'm a little bit conflicted, but I would be interested in hearing what other people have to say before I know if my thoughts have been confirmed or not.
Venus, he's smiling. So obviously she said something that triggered.
So yeah, I mean, I'm kind of like with both you and Michelle. I mean, I can make, I can make a decision tonight. And I tell you, sure, sleeping 24 hours on it is really gonna help me necessarily. I am interested in hearing what people saw in the comments, right? And, and so for Michelle, clearly, it, it sort of made you hesitate a little bit. I'm curious to know, you know, for whom and what were those things? To see if my thinking was, is in line with yours and whatever, but I don't know. I mean, I yeah, like, like I said, I can make a decision tonight if we need to.
So I think that I could make a decision, too. What I don't know about is how we go about having this conversation.
Well, that's the thing is, I, so I think that gives us the majority of people sort of saying that we can have this tonight. At which point, you know, I think that it's okay for me to sort of hold on, make sure I'm reading the right thing, that we proceed to the discussion related to the superintendency and appointment of superintendent of schools. You know, and then, so according to the sheet that, you know, Dorothy laid out. You know, we will now, you know, discuss, you know, discuss the candidates, the method of selection or election, and then, you know. I was looking over the regional agreement. I didn't see any special protocols in the regional agreement about what our vote, anything that should be in according to superintendent. Perhaps I overlooked it, but I thought I did a pretty decent job going through it. You know, so at this point, I really I don't know how I want to phrase this, you know, do we just have an open discussion about all three candidates? Or you know, sort of you know, this is the tricky part, Ty. So I do agree with you. It's like, oh, we can sit there and even in, and so I've been leaning in like Michelle had said last night to, you know, possibly putting our top two candidates forward. And then, because, because when you get into, and I'm trying to put this as mildly as possible, I think when you get into making decisions like this with really good candidates, unfortunately, when it comes down to making a decision.
Right.
Sometimes you're, you, you know, you have to point out deltas and you don't necessarily want to you know, necessarily speak negative, but if you have to compare apples to apples, that, you know, what does one hold better than others? And if you could sort of eliminate someone from having to go through that process, I think that's, I, I look on that favorably, you know, saying, well. You know, so that's why I'm sort of leaning on like maybe see if everyone has the same.
David, could I suggest that maybe that maybe you go down the line of all seven of you, and each of you talk about who are your two top candidates? And from that, you probably get an idea of who the two top are, and then you can continue the discussion from there.
Yeah, that's sort of what I was getting at. So that, that is an okay thing to do at this, at this point.
Yeah.
All right, great. Um. I don't know. I guess I'll start because I guess it's probably one of those things where no one wants to be first, but my top two candidates are Mary Beth and Phil. I think Dan is a great candidate, but I just think the other two would be better fits. So.
Those are my top two candidates as well.
All right, so I guess Ty will go next.
Sorry.
So no problem. Jean, you're next on my screen.
If I had to pick two. Yeah, Mary Beth. Yeah, I don't know if I have a second, honestly.
Yeah.
Michelle Bailey.
So first of all, I'd like to commend Dan for coming tonight. I thought he had some very insightful things to say. Particularly about what are we looking for as a leader, as really a politician. And that we're hungry for vision. I believe both of those statements were true, and I commend him for being able to summarize that from today in such a short period of time. However, based on our site visits, and, and this is nothing against Dan's site visit people, his, his students were lovely, the people we spoke to were fantastic, his staff was powerful and energized, but I would go with Mary Beth and Phil.
Okay. Stacy.
I, too, want to commit actually all the candidates. They did a great job in interviewing as well as hearing from, listening to the site visits to get a lot of information about each candidate. But when I start gathering all my information, I think two candidates stood out to me, Phil Conrad and Mary Beth.
Okay, Michelle Hogan.
I will say Mary Beth and Phil.
And Peter.
For Dan Richards, the teachers and students in his district or in his school convinced me that I would love to work for him. But when Mary Beth has superintendent experience in a multi-town district and making budgets. And, but also Phil Conrad, I mean, the level of support among the teachers in our district, whom I respect deeply, cannot be ignored either. He knows our culture, he knows our needs, so I would have to, my two top two candidates would be Superintendent Banyos and Principal Conrad, Phil Conrad.
All right, yeah, all right. So I think we're unanimous that I think Dan was a, was a great candidate and after, you know, speaking to the people from his district and actually in really speaking with him tonight, myself, I could see what the attraction might have been to put him forward in this process. Where I didn't necessarily see that on paper at first, and I, and I will say that. But, you know, in that conversation with him, also at the same time, you know, it really pointed out to me how unique of a position this really is. You know, not just superintendent itself, the move from superintendent from principal to superintendent, but the move to this particular superintendency. You know, and the really, the end of that situation, the end of that conversation we just had with him, I really sort of felt that like, I, I think he will make a great superintendent someday. I just don't think it's right for our district at this time, and I really wanted to thank him for, you know, going forward with this process and wish him all the best. Moving on. Moving on. Now between Mary Beth and Phil. How, how, how would you guys like to go about this discussion? Because, you know, a- a- as Peter. It's interesting to me, you know, a- and, and. Cause as Peter said, we, we got an influx of emails from. Members of. The teaching staff at the high school. In, in support of Phil Conrad. And. I, I'll tell you while I appreciate. Their support of him, at the same time, it started to be making me really second guess. Him. As. A leader of the district. Not to say that I do not trust the teachers within the district, but twice in my career, I've had to move up from being. A member of the community to the boss of that particular group. And it is a very tricky situation. You, you don't hold people to the same accountability, or at least I can only speak for myself. But it's really hard to sort of do that. And to say that he's familiar with the district. Isn't. The most accurate, I think, assumption, even though he came from the district and he's familiar with the district, we are a very, very different. School, very different communities than we were 12 years ago. So while I can respect that he understands where we were. I don't necessarily know that he, that means he understands where we are. You know, so I have to sort of put that aside. And that's my sort of thought process on that. You know, and then, so now putting that aside, you're looking at two people that are walking into the district. As strangers to our particular needs at this time. You know, and that's how I'm sort of viewing it, trying to sort of even that scale. You know, and I think, and I felt that that really sort of needs to be said because it is weighing heavy on. You know, my decision on who my favorite candidate is. So I'm curious to see what, what else you guys are thinking.
So can I make another suggestion to help maybe move the process?
Yes, please.
So perhaps you need to take each candidate and have each person go through and, and see and talk about what they see as the. The strengths of that candidate and why it was one of their top two as, and sort of. In that, I think you'll see what's coming through to each person as one of the most important attributes to be thinking about. So maybe since you started with Phil, maybe you go through the list and, and have everyone else give their input on Phil.
Sure, that, that, that's great.
I mean, you talked about one aspect, you might have other things you want to add to.
Well, you know, I, I guess to sort of on the positive, right? Because I, I sort of see that as, as a delta. And again, this is not a negative towards Phil. I actually think Phil is a fantastic candidate. I see the attraction on paper and after meeting him and meeting with his district, I see the attraction in him as a candidate. I think he will make a fantastic superintendent. You know, it's my, i- i- and, you know, he. Has a vast teaching experience. He has, you know. Leadership experience. He does not have the district level leadership experience that I would like to see, but he does have the leadership experience and obviously. Is very, very well respected throughout his community, teaching community. Both presently and in his past teaching community. So that's really what I liked about him and. You know, I, I think that this town loves sort of a hometown hero, so I, I can, I can appreciate that as well. You know, so that, that's, those are my feelings, both positive and negative about Phil. Excuse me. Who'd like to go next?
I don't mind jumping in.
Sure.
We're talking about Phil.
Yes.
I think his. Commitment and historical. Experience in the district is a benefit. Because I feel he is, would then be committed to our district and would stay here for the long haul. He did voice that in his interview that he did want to end, I believe he said this, maybe I made it up. He wants to be here the rest of his career if. So I think that, that's one of his strengths is that we know he's not here just for short terms. He's obviously not, not a stepping stone. But he would be here for the long term. So, and that's what I think we need some, some longevity in that position. So.
Are you pointing to me, Dave?
Yes, Stacy, I'm sorry. Then people are sort of walking through behind me, so I'm trying to put it on mute.
Yep. So anyways, I want to say, you know, for Phil, what I like is that. He does have the support from the teachers, which is huge, which would make our coming together a lot better. We're have, you know, there's been a little bit of diversity. Separation. Um, he works at a large district, so I think it would be easier. For his transition because Mike Harvey too came as a principal and made the leap to superintendent. As easier. I mean, if he was at a small district, I would say, okay, I don't know. You know, making that kind of leap would be, but I think it would be very easy because that high school is the same size as our whole district. What I like is that he wants to be involved with stead, with. The students as well as he can manage groups of people at all the different levels and he's a team player and. I also like that, you know, he's worked at the budget level with, you know, such a big, with the high school, such, you know, is a large portion. Very large that I would feel comfortable with him working on the budget and he, as he had said that he has. You know, gone involved with the superintendent working on the budget as well.
Sorry, Jean.
Well. I spent a lot of time with them because I hosted the interviews, right? So. He, he's very well spoken. What I liked about him. Are, you know, he took on some particularly sticky challenges, you know, he changed the schedule. He dealt with. The turf field replacements, this field house, he has, you know, some of the skill sets that we, I think, need. In going into the next few years. I liked some of his, what he had to say about teaching and learning. Like when he said that a complaint is a gift. At least in our interview with him, you know, he was pretty consistent, I think, across. The three interviews, right? I mean, I think the fact. My, my wife, you know, is a school nurse in Andover, so she doesn't. She's not necessarily in Andover High School, but she's go, goes mostly around the middle school or the elementary schools. But, you know, she mentioned that he is very well liked in his community and I think that. The support from the teachers here has to say a lot. The reason why I didn't have him as, as even a second choice is I'm still very concerned about the fact that. He lacks elementary school experience. I mean, that's, that's half the population. That's a big deal. It's not the same. It is not the same. So I understand that people can learn and they should be able to learn. But I just, I just don't want to be an experience where like we are the ones that. Were worthy sort of like learning opportunity for someone. I don't think we had, can afford that. And the other part of it too is like. There's a couple of other things, you know, one is that I understand. People want to go back to sort of the quote unquote, you know, good days of Hamilton one of them. I'm, I've only been in the district for five years. I'm, I don't know what that means. I want to know where we're going to go. The future is where we need to be in looking towards that. It's not going to be what it was. It's where we want to be. That's what we need to focus on. So the other thing is just that, just, you know, David, as you pointed out, I used to be. In the same position where I was a staff and a, and a former, you know, colleague. Where then the next year I became their supervisor. It's a very different dynamic. It's a very different. Like management style and management philosophy to be able to do that. And I think. The fact that he has so many relationships is a plus. And a minus at the same time. You know, I worry with that he's, will really be able to hold people accountable when it really needs to happen.
Right.
And those are my concerns. I mean, this, I mean, I think he's a great guy. I, I would, I think he'd be a great principal. I would think he'd be a great assistant super. If he had that experience as an assistant superintendent in a central office in a district dealing with, you know, pre K to 12 issues. I think he would be great. I just can't get there.
Right. Michelle Bailey. Thanks, Jean.
So. Couple of strengths for Phil. Well, I have quite a list of strengths for Phil. Um, his superintendent spoke very highly of him. And really said that Phil's ready to be a superintendent, that he doesn't need to be an assistant superintendent. So that has. Sat with me pretty. Pretty. Played into my decision making. Um, I thought he was pretty good on identifying that unity is an issue in our district. I think the support of the teachers cannot be understated enough. I think he's charismatic. I wrote something down that I can't read, so I won't say that. He comes from a high achieving district, so he knows kind of what we're talking about. I was impressed by some of the very highly charged issues that he had to deal with in Andover and how he sort of peeled back the layers and made those into improvements. I think, you know, he has been a supervisor when he was in Hamilton one of them. He was not just a teacher. He grew up from being a teacher to being a supervisor. He was the assistant principal at the high school and then. For budgetary reasons, we asked him to take on being the associate principal. When the principal became the principal of both high schools, so that position became a lot more responsible for doing more. So. He has been the supervisor here and had to deal with people in that way. The cons I have are similar. His doesn't have a ton of experience with elementary school. I did, wasn't really satisfied with his answer to that question yesterday. A little concerned about the budget situation that he'd be walking into. And then my biggest concern is that the feedback we got. Administration does not seem to support him as the candidate. So we have a big divide there.
Yeah, no, I noticed that too. Ty, I'm sorry, did you already speak or no?
No. So I, I think I'm going to echo some of what people just said. That he seems like. He, you know, has put a good amount of attention to caring for kids in his school. And I, and I think that's really good. And, and also, you know, talks about having relationships. With some of the people here. But I can't help but feel like it seems like a look backwards and not a look forwards. And that's, and that's a little concerning for me, thinking about a school system and district where we really are forced to look forward and even maybe now more than ever. To take a hard look about where we're going to be and where we want to be. You know, I mean. He, I appreciate that, you know, he sees that potentially. There's a lot of work to do with the community. And that, and I think he said that people can become disillusioned and how to face that head on. Although I think I had asked him kind of, how do you inspire people? And I don't know, and I don't know him at all, right? But I don't know that he seems like that. That kind of person to me. And, and in some ways, we're going to try to move forward with really complicated and hard. Conversations moving forward, especially around what's happening now around the budget. I mean, is he going to be able to pull people in? I, I don't know. I'm concerned about that a little bit. And I don't necessarily know that his. Experience here is an asset. Today.
Right. Did I get to everybody? So, Peter.
You've all touched upon, I have a long list of reasons why I would support. Principal Conrad and you've all touched upon it. Michelle Hogan talked about him being around for the long term. I think that's, that's an asset. I think the fact that his superintendent gave him unwavering support. Is an asset that he's ready for it. I think his experience developing a turf field. Is, is important. I liked his answer about building up leaders around him, you know, is important. The fact that the level of support of the teachers, I think, is important because I think that could build bridges and get, and have buy-ins from teachers. He does understand our culture. He does understand our unique. Budgetary constraints. In the district because he's lived through it. And I, and I liked his answer about. You know, his response to the question about lack of elementary school experience and what he would do to address that. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
No problem. So. Moving on to Mary Beth. Yes, I'll, I'll get the ball rolling again. Because I think I could summarize this a little bit. More quickly for me. I think the experience here is key. The fact that she not only came from, you know, a quote unquote regional district, but also. Continued to build. That district while she was there, you know, adding new member towns in. Excuse me, and really, really understood the political aspect of this job, which I don't think. Most people outside of, you know, the seven of us. Truly comprehend, especially after the year we just had. And just moving forward, at least the next few years, two, three years anyway. I, I see this. As being really a budget and political job almost more than. An inside the classroom job. And again, hopefully that's only for a few years, but, but we have, there's a lot of issues going on that. You know. I think that, you know, Mike, it was happening when, when Mike was still in office and. I think that Julie and Vinnie did a great job of sort of. Not running, you know, running in the theater yelling fire. And did a really great job of handling it this past year that. Experience is really going to be the key walking into this door July 1st. Probably my biggest negative for Mary Beth is. She almost seems spoon fed to me. Because on paper and then just looking at what I know this district needs. She's the only one who really checks off most of the boxes in a, in a, and again, I'm looking at this from. The budget. You know, political side. And that makes me a little uncomfortable. In just, you know, being able to make sure, being confident. That if I chose her, I am. Choosing the best candidate for the job. Right? Not the best candidate from what was handed to me. The best candidate for the job. In, in that, in that it's a no fault of her own, but that's the, my biggest concern. With her. Let's move back or it's just for. Peter, why don't you go?
Can you come back to me?
Yes, I can. If that, that's no problem. Ty, are you ready to speak? I just wanted to give you guys a chance to sort of. Speak first if you wanted to, as opposed to just being last again. Ty, are you? So you're still on mute.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. So I liked that she had a lot to say about consensus building. In how that leads to kind of moving the ball forward. In how that leads to kind of moving the ball forward. In that she has had a lot of experience developing teams and developing consensus. And I think she was saying, making sure that that process involves opinions that are outside of her own. Which, which to me, I think speaks to our confidence and maturity that I think is, that is really important. That's kind of what I left with the most from her. And has kind of a resume that speaks to her being able to be successful in those, in that role.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Stacy, you want to go next?
So I, I like that, you know, she talked a lot about Shrewsbury, good, you know, being a good district. The superintendent experience is a plus because we need that, you know, developing budgets, having that leadership. One of the things I have some concern about was members had said that budget for Mary Beth was not one of her strengths. I mean, and I know we've got Vinnie, who can, you know, who's going to be there for the budget, helping with the numbers, but you know, that has concerns. I know both candidates have their strengths and weaknesses, but that has a little bit of concern for me on that issue.
I just wanted, were you on the call with the auditor? Because, because the auditor actually spoke to that directly, saying that there is one board member that spoke to that often. And in his professional opinion, doesn't agree at all. It thinks that she's actually very strong with budgets.
Okay. And, you know, I, I do, the other concern was, I know she had been in Massachusetts and went up to Vermont for family reasons. And just what I would like it to be, if we're picking, you know, if she's going to be the, the right candidate, you know, is she going to be staying? Because we're looking for some longevity in our district. That, you know, we've, you know, in the last, what, six, you know, we've had a lot of change and would like to see someone who's really going to come in and bring a vision to our school district and, you know, get some things accomplished. So we don't have to be going from superintendent to superintendent and kind of what's been going on. So that's kind of where I stand. But she's definitely very well qualified. I liked some of her ideas and how consensus with her, her members, and she really gets down to working with people one-on-one and in groups even on a personal level. I do like that.
Great. Thank you. Michelle Hogan.
Well, obviously that she brought eight districts or eight communities together to form one district is a huge task. And she has, was it a 16 or an 18 board school committee? That's huge. I think it speaks to her ability to manage different personalities. She also talked about having to deal with some building issues that were huge stress related incidences where closing one school and having kids go to another school. She put out that fire. So she's able to manage under crisis, which I think is a great skill to have. I was impressed by the teachers and the student service group talking about her innovative approaches and her push for professional development. That was a huge point that they all made. I think that's important. When I first met her at the, her first interview, my first impression of her was no flash, but grounded. And granted, that was a, you know, a five, 10 minute meet and greet before walking her over. But that was an impression that I walked away with. And then after talking with the people in her community, they all said that she's calm, she's, she listens. She knows how to manage people well. The only drawback, I would say, and is similar to what Stacy said. She's only been there for a year and a half and I'm a big person, a big loyalty person. Granted, it is family, family comes first. And I know that's her decision for moving home, but it disappoints me that she's only been there a year and a half and, but again, family comes first. But that's the only thing that makes me go, hmm, you know, you know, stick it out. But again, family does come first. But I, she has a lot of strengths and I think where we are right now as a district, we need someone that can manage under fire as well as an eye to the future. And she seems to have all of those characteristics.
Thank you. Jean?
Well, I like, I liked her, I like her experience in Massachusetts, also in Vermont. I think she, I think her regional experience in Vermont, even though it's in Vermont, is also a big thing for me. I like the fact that she had building experience, school building, school building experience with the MSBA in Shrewsbury. I actually thought her budget, her response to the budget question was, was good. I thought it was actually pretty spot on. I like the fact that they did a SWOT analysis to understand the perceptions in the community. She, it sounded to me when she was describing responses to the dissent question, the five dysfunctions of the team. I mean, she studies, at least in that one anecdote, she studies, right? There are a couple of things that still, you know, concern me about Mary Beth. You know, I think, I think she, so the tenure thing is not so, so big of a thing for me. The average tenure of a superintendent is less than three years, right? So we're being, we beat, we beat the average of Mike, honestly, but they don't tend to stay a long time in any one district, mostly probably because of the political climate. That happens. Mayors turn over, school councils turn, or city councils turn over. But, but when she said, you know, why is she leaving? She had mentioned that the district is moving towards more policy and governance issue, governance challenges. And maybe it was the way I heard it, but it sounded to me that she was, she didn't really want to sort of have to deal with that kind of concern. And maybe, again, maybe I'm reading into that. But she was there to build the region, regional district. So that has to count for something for sure. My only other thing was that, you know, she, she had mentioned that she wants, she believes in crews, not passengers, right? In that you are hard on the issues, but soft on the people. And so what happens if the person is the problem? What happens if the person is the issue, right? You still have to hold someone accountable. You know, we're all, you know, we, we all live in a world of accountability. And I just worry that, you know, when you say you're hard on the issue, soft on the people, that you're not going to really be really driving towards all possible solutions to the problem.
If I can add during the interview, our site visit, the administrators did talk about her experience of letting go some administrators, a couple, I think it was a principal, that it wasn't working. So it was addressed in that site visit, so.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jean. All right, Michelle.
So I felt that Mary Beth had some great qualities. She was the only candidate that took advantage of this format. You know, she saw this not as a disadvantage, but as an advantage and was able to show us documents and information. So I liked that she was able to innovate on the fly. I thought it was good that she had experience working with the MSBA. I felt like she is able to articulate a vision, the fact that Jean could articulate the statements that I heard over and over again, crew not passengers. Hard on the issue, soft on the people. I thought that the profile of the graduate was a lot of really difficult work, something that we need. I liked that she regularly visits the schools. That came through. I liked that she had a lot of commitment to supporting professional development and even idea generation within her staff. Making commitment to allow them to visit other schools, including, you know, going to San Diego, which is like all the rage to go to high tech high. But then they were able to come back and talk about what they did with that and to develop that project around the environmentalist. And then to get involved with the trails and make it really authentic learning. I felt like that was something that maybe we're looking for in Hamilton one of them as someone who's an, who's going to be supporting some authentic learning. I think the fact that most of her career has been spent in Massachusetts. She's very familiar with Massachusetts. She's only been in Vermont two and a half years. So I feel comfortable with that. She's at, was it Shrewsbury, which, you know, if you go and look at the rankings, if anybody cares about the rankings, ranked above us. So she knows what it's like to be in a high performing district. She's in Vermont, but I mean, her district includes Woodstock, which is not an unsophisticated community, very sophisticated like us. So I feel that she's good with that. I think the discussion with the auditor was clear that in that same case, that there was a need to deal with personnel issues and that through that issue that she's learned a lot more about budget. So, you know, sometimes when you get the question, it is a gift, as we heard from Phil, and so as it was for her. I think the drawbacks for me were also like Stacy, the longevity. Not 100% sure about that. I do know that she started her career in Beverly, so she has some familiarity with this area. I'm also like, we've had a couple of leaders that have been like really competent people, but they haven't connected with the community, or they did connect with the community and then the community turned on them. And I feel like Mary Beth is not as charismatic as Phil is. And like, we had a superintendent that wasn't great, and this is not to compare anybody to this particular one, but he was kind of a golly kind of guy. And people like really connected with that because they felt like he was talking to them on their level. So I'm not 100% sure about her fit in the community. So that's my biggest concern on Mary Beth.
Thank you very much. Before we go on to voting, I just wanted,
Sorry, I pass it. If I can.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Thank you, Peter.
No, I think Superintendent Banios, her strengths are, you know, that she is in a school district. She's, she's in a multi-town school district with different priorities, programs and politics. And she's been able to manage that effectively is one of her strengths, especially in our, in our, in our unique situation. I appreciated her work for the portrait of a graduate. It shows to me that she thinks about the future and that portrait of a graduate is an anchoring document for their decision making. I, I appreciated that about her. I know she's, so the site visit said she's passionate about visioning and that portrait of a graduate shows that. She, the site visit also gave us insight that she does see and considers all perspectives. She, I know two school committee members in our site visit said budgeting is not a strength, but I know the auditor disagreed strongly. And that he, she asked all the right questions when things, when there was a problem and that she put a corrective action plan in place. And I know she, from what I understand from the site visit, she's great with the teachers and administration, but she should engage with students more. And perhaps the problem is she's sort of seeing eight towns and it's hard to get into eight towns. She was in the trenches taking grenades, trying to consolidate eight districts. And she might have more time in our district. I guess that's where I'm, thank you.
I was going to mention one note that I had written down. It's not necessarily about a particular candidate. It's about our situation. Right? Just that one of them is a new town administrator, Hamilton is a new town manager. Excuse me, we have a new super assistant superintendent of finance. We have a new HR director. We have a new director of facilities. Two new elementary school principals. And a new director of finance, you know, Vinnie's old job. You know, and I think that's important to consider when moving forward to that we have a group of young leaders within our district already, or young, like fresh newly hired leaders. And I meant to sort of bring that up, excuse me, but I just want to reiterate that here. So is there anything else anyone like to, would sort of like to discuss? I think the next thing we need to move on to then is,
I, so I think it's pretty clear from what we've seen is that there's a large contingency of people who are going to be upset with one of the candidates being picked over their choice. And a small contingency of people that are going to be upset with picking of another person. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. And I think we also need to be ready to support the new leader in figuring that out. Because there seems to be a chasm between two people that need to be together and have a, we can't have people going like this if we want to be on target and focused. So we're going to need to really hone in on that early for whoever the next leader is.
So, you know, I, I see that too. And that's sort of why I kind of addressed it right away. I don't know how this vote's going to go. One thing is this four years of whatever of this school committee has taught me is that I never know how anything's going to go. You know, but that needs, we're all professionals here, right? We've been hired in the, I mean, so we've been elected to oppositions, you know, to represent the best interests of this district. And you know, as long as we are all comfortable knowing that that's the way we're moving forward, that we, you know, it's what we believe, which is, and that conversation I just heard from all of you is exactly how we're feeling. I don't think any, I don't think there's any slam dunk here. And I think I made that pretty clear as well. You know, the candidate I'm leaning towards does feel like it was spoon fed to me and that really makes me very uncomfortable. On the other hand, the candidate that I like, but not as strongly, just got so much support from, you know, this influx of emails from teachers all at the exact same time, within five minutes of each other. I got over a dozen emails. That really, to be honest, pushed me away from those letters of support. That just, you know, from a hiring perspective, just made, made me take pause. Right? And no matter what, I don't think anyone's going to be able to walk out of here feeling 100% satisfied. Again, I know my, you know, and that's something that just has to, you know, everyone's just going to have to realize that.
Just to add, David, the teachers are on the front line. They are fighting the fight every single day and they are appreciated and respected. And their opinions matter. But like you said, and Michelle said, that we need to look at the district and the whole, the whole picture. And again, it's not, if, if whatever way the vote goes, it's not that their emails and their, 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 their praise wasn't taken into account because it was and it has been throughout the last two weeks. Because we started receiving emails two weeks ago, when that, or a week, sorry, a week and a half ago. So they are respected and, and they do count and it does matter, which whatever way the vote goes. So that's it.
And I have to go along with you, Michelle Horgan, since there's two Michelles, that I agree. We, we need to take into everything account and our teachers are frontline and we, you know, we need to also be able to work with them as well because they are important, total part of this whole district. They've been here for a long time. They've had that longevity. And so I think we just really need to look at everything as a whole and see and make sure that everybody's opinion, understand their opinions do count too. Not to say that we're dismissing anything, no matter how the vote goes, but I just wanted to acknowledge that.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's not to say that I don't think that, well, I don't know, let's get on this. I, I, so moving on, not to sort of cut anyone short, but I could actually just talk about this forever. So in, just to sort of move myself along, I think it's important to discuss the voting process. There is nothing laid out again that I saw in the regional agreement about how we vote on this, but I actually feel strongly that it should be a super majority. I don't know how all the rest of you feel, if we actually need to put that to a vote. So anyone who disagrees with me, I guess the easiest way to do it, a simple majority versus a super majority.
So you're saying five versus four?
Yes. You know, like a budget, you know, what are our three important things is superintendent, the budget, right? I think that's a super, I think a super majority would be warranted here.
I think, I think in the end, when there is a clear candidate, it should be unanimous.
I, I wouldn't 100% behind you on that as well, but I think we have, you know, this isn't an easy decision. I don't want anyone, you know, I, I know what's going on in my mind and my heart right now, and I know all of you feel the same. And we have, I think I counted 33 at last count of, you know, people on here watching us, which is, you know, quite impressive and nerve wracking at the same time. You know, but I think that, yes, we do want to throw unanimous support whoever we choose, but I think for, you know.
We don't get a super majority.
I think we sleep on it and come back tomorrow.
Can I just point out, if you sleep on it and come back tomorrow, you're going to have very busy days.
So.
With a lot of input.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question, Dorothy? So at this point, would other school committees sometimes take input or would we just assume we've gotten all of the input because we have already given that opportunity?
In general, you would assume you've gotten all the input because you've given the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And I also, since I was there, the last vote of super, real superintendent, not interim or anything, that we did not have a super majority on that vote with Mike Harvey, we did not have a super majority. So I'm just, I want to just point that out, okay, to everybody.
So it's up for us to decide, do we want super majority or?
David, whatever you decide, I would confirm it with a vote.
So, okay. So I guess I'll put the motion forward, all those in favor of selecting our superintendent candidate, superintendent by super majority.
So that, so Dorothy, are you saying we need a motion, a second and then, okay, so we need someone to make a motion and have a second before we have a vote?
Well, that, I was trying to say it's a, so.
Okay.
Can I get a motion on? Motion on the super majority.
I, I make a motion that the Hamilton School Committee so make a motion to accept a super majority for the selection of the school committee, the superintendent. Was tough.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Yep. Jean Lee.
Yes.
Ty Primo.
Unmute Ty.
Yes.
Stacy Metternich.
No.
Michelle Bailey.
No.
Peter Walczek.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Ah, yes.
And I'm yes. So it's a five two vote. All right. Let me make sure at this point, and Dorothy, please correct me if I'm missing a step. I will go call on member to member to select your candidate for superintendent. Is there anything else I need to do?
If that's, if that's the way you want to go as opposed to someone making a motion for one candidate and then voting.
Okay, well, I just, so the, I was just thinking that I had to go down the line anyway, so.
Yeah, okay, makes sense. Makes sense.
And then that way we could actually, if we do have the super majority, we could just vote them all unanimously. Or hopefully. Jean Lee.
Mary Beth Banyos.
Ty Primo.
Mary Beth Banyos.
Stacy Metternich.
Bill Conrad.
Michelle Bailey.
Bill Conrad.
Peter Walczek.
Superintendent Banyos.
Michelle Horgan.
Mary Beth Banyos.
And I pick Mary Beth Banyos. This just proves how strong of a candidate I think Phil Conrad was and that doesn't want, and I, you know, definitely want to commend him. Mary Beth did get the five votes necessary for a super majority. At this time, I think we should make a motion to name Mary Beth Banyos as our superintendent.
Please include pending successful.
Thank you very much. I knew there was something I was going to forget. Thank you.
Sorry for jumping in.
No, no, no. This is exactly why you're here. Thank you so much.
I move that we nominate, marry, or nominate or accept.
Accept.
I move that the Hamilton Wyndham Regional School Committee accept Mary Beth Banyos as superintendent pending successful negotiations. Contract negotiation, successful contract negotiations.
Thank you.
Second, I'll second that.
Michelle Bailey. Jean Lee.
Yes.
Ty Primo.
Yes.
Stacy Metternich.
Yes.
Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
Peter Walczek.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
And David Pletus, a yes.
Would you like me to call her while you're here?
So that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put myself on mute and walk away from the computer.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
The next step in this process is for the negotiations committee to meet and I believe that we posted something for Friday. At the time, at 4:30, is that, does that time work out? So Michelle, I'm seeing that you're making a face. I'm stuck in my house. I'm free all day, so.
Friday is PT day and they, they have to call me to consolidate appointments, so I'm waiting on that. So I don't know, but I can try and work around that.
So is, do you have like a normal time? I, I don't mind moving it.
Yeah, my normal time is 4:30, but I'm understanding from the last time I was there that they're trying to consolidate things down to one part of the day and they've laid off half of the people, so.
Do we want to move it into the evening just to make it safe? I mean, how long is it or in the morning? I don't really.
What's today?
Today is Tuesday.
Let me call them. Tomorrow. That would get, that gave them today to figure out what they're going to do and then maybe they'll know tomorrow and then.
Michelle, I'm sorry, Michelle Horgan, are you free all day on Friday?
Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon. So Michelle Bailey, I am free all day. Michelle Horgan's free the afternoon when you know, will you do me a favor and just let Janelle know to post it? And then, and then you can just tell me when it is, okay?
Okay.
You know, I know I've sort of been saying this and I really can't say this enough. Thank you guys for all of the work you put in the past week and a half. This has been absolutely crazy. And, you know, I, I think a lot of what we do as a board sometimes is misconstrued or misunderstood by the general public and really how much time and effort goes into, especially these big, big, big jobs. You know, it's, it's a full-time volunteer position at times. This week with overtime. And, you know, I'm really proud to be part of this team, you know, and this week, really, really, you know, couldn't be happier with the, with the results. So thank you so much. I just want to thank the selection committee for all the work they did in getting us. You know, our, our finalists here, after meeting them, like I said, you know, I could see what everyone saw in those candidates. And thank you because I know, again, it's a sort of a tireless, thankless job. You know, so it's really very much appreciated. So I do see Dorothy's back, so.
I am back. Mary Beth is gratefully accepts pending contract negotiations and says she very much looks forward to being part of the team.
So, oh, that's fantastic. That's good news. So is there anything else we have to discuss right now?
So I'd like to discuss the email we got today.
Which email is that?
So there was an email about the Washington DC trip being canceled and I was a little concerned because I had brought up several times that I thought we should meet and discuss that and I was very clearly told that that was the responsibility of the superintendent, but then the superintendent checked with you and you told her to cancel it. So I feel like we were really undermined as a committee.
The, well, no, it was, they looped me in and I just agreed with it. So I apologize if you felt that we didn't, the only thing that I'd said was just to run. I didn't like the fact that anything would be non-refundable and I just suggested they run that part by district council. You know, other than that, you know, there was, in, you know, the choice was made and I was just saying, yes, check this out. So.
I just felt like there was clear interest from the committee about that and there was no communication from you to us. You're our contact and that should have come from you and not the superintendent. So I appreciate her transparency on that, but where there's issues of known interest, I really would appreciate if everyone was included in those discussions and not just a quick back and forth. It just seemed like you had undermined us, so.
Well, I apologize. That wasn't the intention at all. It was literally just going through my emails, seeing that and bringing up, you know, a note saying, hey, you know, there's no reason anyone should be holding deposits at this point because it's for circumstances far beyond our control. And that was my only interest in responding to it at all. So again, you know, I apologize because it, you know, the attention was not to supersede anybody or to leave anyone out of the conversation.
So when are we meeting again as a committee? Like, is, is business on hold or like?
I don't think it should be. I think the eighth, we should have one, shouldn't we? I haven't discussed or the first, actually. I have to circle.
The eighth is like the middle of the week, isn't it?
Eighth is a Wednesday.
The first.
Was the first.
Yep, that's what we had drafted up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should be on the first because the eighth is Passover.
Yep. So. Yeah, no, so as far as I know, all right, I'll, I'll circle back with Julie tomorrow and just, you know, see what that agenda looks like.
We have put off a whole bunch of policies.
That I do know.
That sections are ready and Dorothy.
I owe you G.
Yeah, I think you owe me G.
Yep, yep, it's all done. I'll send it.
Okay, so we have like a big one and a small one to, to cover. So when I get that from Dorothy, I'll flip it over to Janelle so she can have it for the exhibits. Minutes to review because I have minutes and I think I've put several, I have to review a couple, last couple, but we'll have quite a bit to be caught up on our minutes to, to meet our OML requirements. So I want those on track again.
I'm sorry, my internet cut out for a bit. What's the next, what's the date and time of our next meeting?
April 1. We don't have a current time. Do we like six better than seven? Now that they're not commuting, I can't, hold on. I can't see anyone. Yes, no, otherwise, nod, no.
I think six is better.
Yeah, that works for me.
Okay.
Six is fine.
All right, I'm just trying to shoot Janelle and Julie a note as we speak, so I don't forget anything.
Janelle's still here, so.
Are you going to cancel tomorrow night?
Yes, we could cancel tomorrow night now. There's no need for that.
Thank you.
And then, like I said, Friday, we have a negotiations committee that Michelle is going to get to Janelle the time tomorrow when she finds out.
Thank you.
Did you talk to Naomi about that also?
I have not. I can definitely reach out to Naomi.
Okay, so when I get to you, I'll, I'll try and get to you early in the day so you can get in touch with her.
Did, I know I sent you the two contracts earlier. Did you take a look at them?
Oh, no, I didn't see that email.
Oh, yeah, I know. I sent them right back to you. They're very similarly worded and they're very simple contracts.
Right, and I would, that's what we want to do. Does the MASC have a sample contract?
I was just going to say, would you like the MASC sample contract?
Sure, send it over. I think this coincides with that pretty closely.
And can I also for our next meeting, just to kind of confirm or say for our next meeting, if Policy Working Group is meeting anytime soon? No? I know what you're talking about. Um, let me get in touch with Julie and Peter and Dorothy. Dorothy doesn't really have to, I mean, Dorothy doesn't really have to come to that. Dorothy doesn't really have to, I mean, Dorothy doesn't really have to come to that, well, no, go anywhere, anytime, we can all do this. Yeah, so, yeah, we could try and just either do a quick meeting just on that one thing, because I don't want to bog down administration with a lot of this, when maybe they need other things, so let me check with Julie and see what she's got going on. Okay, yeah, it just, it kind of puts our staff on our capital planning finance work group on a holding pattern, so we can get that one policy looked at. Yeah, if we could do it, even if we can do it Monday or Tuesday, we could still get a document before the Wednesday meeting, so yeah, we could try that, yeah, okay.
And we'll be doing Zoom for the foreseeable future?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
So everyone should get your headshot done, so you can, or a cute little baby like Ben.
That is a cute baby.
All right, I'll just do it with Dante, it'll be awkward, because he's 11.
Okay.
All right, let's make a motion then.
I move that turn at 9:32.
Second.
So Jean, Michelle Bailey.
Yes.
So Peter Walczek.
Yes.
Jean Lee.
Yes.
So Stacy Metternich.
Yes.
Michelle Horgan.
Yes.
I almost called your name, Dorothy. Ty Prima. And I am a S, so have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Okay, stop recording.